Good afternoon, everybody. It is Monday, August twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two at six P M. And I'll call to order the Free Town Board Select meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on our YouTube page. We will be going to executive session and then coming back into open session after that. We are going into executive session for the following reason. Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A six. To consider the purchase, exchange lease or value of real estate. If the chair declares, and I do, that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. So would thou entertain a motion to go into executive session?
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Selectman Lo?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Good afternoon, everybody. We are now back in open session. Thank you for your patience. So moving on to agenda item two. This is a meeting minutes from four eight, two thousand and twenty-two and four and eight eight, two thousand and twenty-two. I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from four eight and eight eight.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then item three is whether or not to for us to look into leasing space on the police communication towers. And I think that this is obvious things that we should we should do. So with that, you know, put a R F P. And we can see if there's any interest in, you know, generating some revenue from the tower that we have. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to have town administrator put on a R F P to lease space in the police communication tower.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then item four is whether we should close the libraries, town hall, highway and transfer station for mandatory staff training on nine fourteen from twelve to four P M. Everyone talk about this a little bit?
Yeah, so we we have organized sort of a staff meeting, health awareness, mental health awareness, uh, training at the C O A on the fourteenth. Maya, the insurance company has offered to come in and they're paying for it all. They're gonna bring in, you know, a healthy lunch for everybody. And we're gonna have some discussions on how to, you know, how to stay healthy and work balance, work work-life balance. And how to keep, you know, you know, keep yourself healthy when stress happens, which happens a lot in in all of these positions. So they've offered to pay for that. It'll be a lunch and be at the C O A. So we're asking, I'm asking the community to close the town facilities so that the employees can attend this meeting and learn, you know, maybe take something away where it will help them. We're trying to get resources in case anybody does need any services. But there'll be little things, the lunch, maybe teaches how to do chair yoga, things like that, that will just teach people how to balance work life.
Perfect. That makes sense. It just obviously, you know, maybe probably want to put out Free Town Flash and some stuff on our website.
Yeah.
Uh, just to communicate that so people don't show up and the doors are locked, right?
Is that a Wednesday?
It is a Wednesday afternoon. We'll do, we'll be outside and inside at the C O A. Once we get your approval, we'll we'll publicize everything.
Alright, great. Alright, so with that, so I'll entertain a motion to close the libraries, town hall, highway and transfer station for mandatory staff training on nine fourteen, two thousand and twenty-two from twelve to four P M.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to agenda item five. This is choose a company awarded for the post closure environmental monitoring of the landfill bid. It looks like the low bid was Riverhawk L L C. Seems pretty, uh, seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, yeah, they were the ones who did it this past year.
Alright, that's that's good. And so, yeah, twenty-seven thousand compared to thirty-one thousand. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to award the post closure environmental monitoring of landfill bid to Riverhawk Environmental L L C.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now we have the agreement associated with that, which I looked over, it looks pretty straightforward. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the town of Free Town and Riverhawk Environmental L L C for the post closure environmental monitoring of the landfill.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And also related, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the town administrator to sign the agreement between the town of Free Town and Riverhawk Environmental L L C.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Okay, next is the I T server upgrades at town hall.
Yeah, so at town meeting, money was approved to work on the 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 infrastructure, I T infrastructure. So one of the things that we're entertaining is having our own email server. Right now, we pay for every single license. So we're at about fifty licenses and we pay every year on it for every license. So I think it's about two thousand dollars.
How much was that?
Currently, and
Currently, it's ten thousand?
Ten thousand, I think, is about what it costs us for the licenses every single year. To put in our dedicated email server is is about six thousand dollars for the server and then whatever it costs to to put it in. And then we will not need to pay for licenses and we can have as many as we'd like to have. So I think cost savings long term, it was like saying, we got the money at town meeting for I T improvements. But I just wanted to make sure that the selectmen were okay with a dedicated email server. I think we had that in the past and then we went away from it. So I just wanted to have that discussion in case there was any trepidation.
Is it like a physical server that we have at the town hall?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it'll be backed up in the cloud.
Backed up the cloud, yes.
I was gonna ask that and then security for it all, but if we're having it in town hall, wouldn't, yeah.
Alright, that sounds good to me, especially it's long-term cost savings, makes sense. Any any discussion on this?
No, it just makes sense. I don't even have to keep paying the yearly fee for stuff we need.
Alright, sounds good. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to to, or yeah, to proceed with the I T server upgrades at town hall.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, next is ambulance abatements and write-off for the month of July. The total amount is thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-two cents. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the ambulance abatements and write-offs.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, moving on is to approve the adding contents insurance to the town's policy for the James White Library located at five Washburn Street, East Free Town. I saw that list, I'll do. Value of the contents in the packet?
Two forty-four and a half there.
Which is?
Page forty, page forty?
Forty-one.
Forty-one.
It's twenty-four thousand five hundred.
Okay.
Twenty-four thousand five hundred.
And then how much does that impact the cost of the insurance?
Five hundred and one dollars.
Five hundred and one dollars, yeah.
Alright, that seems to make sense to me. Any discussion?
No.
Don't know.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve adding the contents insurance to the town policy for the James White Library located at five Washburn Road, East Free Town.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, agenda item eleven. This is whether to increase the winter twenty-twenty, winter twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three snow pile rates by five dollars per hour. So that will bring up the eight-foot plow to eighty dollars an hour, nine-foot plow, eighty-six dollars an hour, ten-foot. Those are the current, so this would be, okay, current, so it's five dollars to all of these, sorry, clear cut. So, yeah, I mean, this is, I'm assuming, just to stay competitive and get people to sign up?
Yeah, it was, I think, brought on as well. I spoke with the highway surveyor because of the cost of gas and all of that. He thinks we need to make it attractive enough so we can have people.
Yeah, I think even last year we had some trouble before.
No, I think we're gonna continue that. Yeah, we will.
Yeah. Well, I think this is a good start and, you know, we'll face this again. If, hopefully not, but if we do. Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to increase the winter twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three snow pile rates by five dollars per hour.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So now we are going to talk about the special town meeting warrants. So I will quickly just read, you know, I guess the warrant titles and if you want to stop me and we can talk about them more in depth. So article, and they're actually articles aren't actually numbered yet. Right, but so the first one is becoming a member of the Bristol Plymouth Regional Vocational Technical School. We all know what that's about. Second one is increase senior work off program. So this would be for the real estate tax bills. So it's increasing from, it's currently at seven hundred and fifty dollars to increase that total amount to fifteen hundred dollars. Alright, um, next is a land transfer, N B T A to the town of Free Town. It's a property that the N B T A took at one point, they don't need, so it's gonna come back to the town. And this might actually not need to go to town meeting.
Yeah, well, I I think it does, but we'll get, once you approve it being placed on the, we'll send this to town council and get their their, um, important, if it if it does, it's on there, if it doesn't, we'll remove it. And then ultimately, it's gonna go to the conservation commission. This is a piece of land by Ford Park that people use for a walking path.
Okay. Next is purchase a roadside mower for the highway department. This is pretty straightforward. Then next one is M S four stormwater management permit.
This is something we have to do every
We have to do every year, nothing new there. So following that one is increase funds in the accounting department personnel, if we don't have the dollar values there yet, right?
I don't have it yet. It'll all depend on how our hiring process goes.
Yes.
And what we want on overlap between the existing and
Yeah, with that. Any discussion there?
My, I'm just looking at, I never looked at hard copy, but I went from the hard copy and reclassified council on agent building funds was the name.
Okay.
I don't know why it's it's different, so we must be on a different level.
Uh, did I, oh, sorry, oh, you're right, you know, I just missed one. I skipped it, that's my bad.
You could also, um, if you don't close the warrant, you can discuss that during a joint meeting and then come back and deal with that if you want.
Yep, yeah, so yeah, so this, the one I accidentally skipped is reclassify accounts on agent building funds. This will be talked about later on during the joint meeting. Alright, so we talked about the accounting department personnel funds. Addition of employment positions to the bylaws. And so this would be to add a, a Parks and Rec director. Any discussion on this?
Did you wanna, did you wanna discuss changing this to a program director that would encompass Parks and Recs?
Yeah, I think so. I think that way, everything gets touched in town, right? So whether it's working with seniors, working with children, working with the schools, there's something for everybody if we just change the title a little bit.
Yeah, it get a little more broad.
Yeah, and the foreign program, program director, um.
Should be vulnerable now, or?
Um, yeah, I think you should make a motion to change it and and then, because if you're gonna make a motion at the end to add all the articles that you've just run through, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You want that to be corrected, or you can add them all and then talk about this one and add it separately.
Yeah, I just, I'll just, so I'll entertain a motion to update the article currently titled Addition of Employment Position to Bylaws and change the title from Position of Parks and Rec Director to Program Director.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye. And then also, so this impacts the next, which is to fund the Parks and Rec Director. So this article changed rather than Parks and Rec Director, it will be Program Director. Uh, so I'll entertain a motion to make that change as well.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, sorry, I'll entertain the motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Alright, all, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Next is decrease the school assessment, so it looks like the was asked the town to vote to decrease the school assessment to the sum of ninety-three thousand, four hundred dollars.
Yeah, ninety-three thousand nine hundred.
What I, what I say, sorry. Been a long day. Ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars.
Yeah, this is a result of getting more state aid than we had anticipated and it reduces the assessments to town. But since we voted for the budget as it was, we had to go back and reduce it.
Alright, that makes sense. No discussion there? Pretty straightforward?
I voted those break back to your whole farm.
I think, I think I have a feeling that one's gonna go through, no problem. So next would be transfer cemetery commission personnel budget to unemployment budget. So this is because someone resigned.
Yeah, it's really because the Sexton that used to mow the grass at the cemetery quit and then we didn't fill the position. The highway department has taken taken that responsibility over and they have, they have new staff members. But we have, so it's to transfer the money, we need to the highway department, but we have an unemployment liability that just makes sense to transfer it over.
Okay.
To unemployment, because they don't need to fund it.
Yep, and next one is transfer highway department personnel wages to unemployment budget.
Again, same thing that when he did the budget, he had personnel that were at a higher rate pay. And and so he's got a little bit of extra money to move over.
Great, makes sense. Alright, funding to hire senior clerk for town hall.
This would be a floating position.
Yep.
So that, um, and it would be a part-time floating position to piggyback off of the part-time assessors. So we we just, we need staffing to cover vaca, you know, we have
A lot of, yeah.
Police, vacation, out sick, and sometimes when it's tax time, it's very, very busy. We just need extra staff and it makes sense to have somebody who can go to different departments to cover when needed.
Yep. Makes sense. Next one is to funding to hire a human resources director. And this is just a position that we don't currently have in the town, which I think makes sense to have. Alright. Uh, next article is possible purchase of two self-main street. And we know this was at the last town meeting, it did not go through with, we think that makes sense. I still think it's in the town's best interest to purchase this piece of property. So I think it makes sense to leave it on there and, um, just take another swing at it. Any questions?
No.
Okay. Next is lease of the San Tentera Bank in Assonet for the town hall annex. This is obviously we have severe shortage space at the town hall and parking. So a short-term solution, we feel could be to lease some space there at that location since the bank is now vacant. So, any questions on that?
No, it makes sense. We need the space and it's available, so.
Alright.
If we can get the right price, we'll go forward.
Yes. Next is purchase of a ballistic shield. I'm assuming this is for the, is it for the police?
I hope so.
And then, I think finally is supplement to the capital stabilization fund, which obviously don't have that number yet, right? What am I missing?
Active shooter training.
So, so yeah, sorry. Active shooter training for the police officers and firefighters, that makes sense. Any questions?
No.
Missed anything else?
No, that is, that that is two petition articles that you have
Okay, yeah.
And then it's your capital stabilization, which we're waiting for the amount of free cash to come from the town council, we'll have a better idea.
Do I have the petition items?
Yes, have, yeah.
I have, yeah. Sorry, I think I have my, I have one. Yeah, so, alright, okay, no, yeah. So these are two petition items, um, which obviously are going to be in town meeting. Because that's not, they went through the legal process to get that on them. So it's revised article eleven of the town of Free Town bylaws, and this is, it's it's a change to requirements or for lot size and and common ownership, I'm assuming.
Yeah, honestly, I haven't went through the whole thing as we just got that today.
Yeah.
I want to take a look at it, but again, it's a petition article, if the signatures get certified,
It's gonna be
It has to launch as written, so there's not anything we can change with that.
Okay. I mean, yeah. Alright. So are we good there?
Just the supplement to capital stabilization.
Yeah, which we don't know what it is yet, so. Alright, so I'm okay with all those. I don't know about you guys, any questions, concerns?
No, do we have to go over the the C O A one?
Do you wanna, um?
Hold off on on item twelve for now? Which is, oh, sorry, what, the actual vote?
I would say you want to approve placing all the articles except that one on the town meeting warrant for ten eighteen. Have your meeting with the voting committee and then revisit this one and then, and then close the warrant after that. So we're gonna close the warrant right now.
Yeah.
But I need, you'll need a motion to, or you can even wait until the end of the meeting if you wanted to make a motion to approve.
That's what I was thinking, just doing both at once?
Skip it.
Okay. Alright, so agenda item fourteen is discussion of vote whether to approve the town administrator to sign the required paperwork for citizens for citizens' ink for the low-income water service program.
Yeah, this is just a program that will help people that need some assistance paying their utility bills and water bills.
Okay.
Great, great program.
Yeah, that sounds great. So I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the town administrator to sign the required paperwork for citizens for citizens' ink for the low-income water service program.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye. Then I think it goes right over to personnel.
Personnel, item number fifteen. Accept the resignation of Kimberly Faels effective eleven sixteen, two thousand and twenty-two. In the discussion, she's ready for retirement, so.
Yeah, we will miss her dearly. But unfortunately, no other choice, we have to accept her resignation.
Correct, so. That said, I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Kimberly Faels effective eleven sixteen, two thousand and twenty-two.
Motion, motion made.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Agenda number sixteen, discussion of whether to approve the following appointments. I'm just gonna read them all and then can all prove at the end. A, Thomas E. Ashley, junior, as sergeant, probationary, effective eleven thirty, two thousand and twenty-two through six thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. B, Michael J. Connell, junior, as sergeant, probationary, effective twelve one, two thousand and twenty-two through six thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. C, Megan DeCosta, as tobacco control agent, effective eight twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two through six thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. D, Jennifer Durant, as measure of wood, bark and lumber, effective eight twenty, eight twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two through six thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. And then E, Mark Fornacari, as special police officer, effective seven one, two thousand and twenty-two through six thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. So these are all the recent hires and changes in town for sergeants, obviously for the retiring sergeants we have. Tobacco control agent also is new and of course Jennifer and and Mark, um, open for discussion. But it's a pretty, pretty solid audience. That's the case, I'll entertain a motion to approve Thomas Ashley as sergeant, probationary, Michael J. Connell as sergeant, probationary, Megan DeCosta as tobacco control agent, Jennifer Durant as measure of wood and bark and lumber, love that title. Mark Fornacari, a special police officer, and on their effective dates per A through E of this, um, number sixteen.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, number seventeen, discussion vote whether to approve the memorandum of agreement between the town of Free Town and the Public Use and Public Employees Union, Local eleven forty-four, Launa, Public Safety Dispatchers. So discussion on this, the vote is, as you know, they need a part-time and a full-time dispatcher and of course, that that's a huge position, so. Couple of changes that were made, nothing that was already ordinary.
Yeah, I think, yeah, just slight change, I think it's adding some language into the C B A.
Correct.
Just to kind of make it more attractive for us to get.
It's out there right now, so it's been posted, so we're just looking, I think there's some candidates, but hopefully there will be some board so they can have a good panel, a good board.
Alright, course for me.
I entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the town of Free Town and the Public Users Union, Local eleven forty-four, Launa, Public Safety Dispatchers.
Make that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number eight, Ward and Parks Commission. Number eighteen, discussion vote whether to extend the staffing for boat ramp on weekends through the month of September, Saturdays and Sundays, one staff member from ten A M. to four P M. So as you know, we voted on a handful of times over the, over the past few months. We have a couple of tenants that we hired this past summer. I think it's going well. And I think it's gonna continue going well, just gonna extend the hours into September, so we anticipate more usage of the ramp.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so we're reducing the hours, but we're still giving some presence when people are there, so I'm okay with it.
That way, we happen to be notified and keep an eye on things as needed and, um, it's just a win for the town. It's going pretty well so far.
Alright.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to extend the staffing for boat ramp on weekends, on weekends through the month of September, Saturdays and Sundays, one staff member from ten A M. to four P M.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Alright, so now, the building committee board select meeting is scheduled to start at seven P M.
Yeah.
We can't start before that. So I'll, I'll entertain a motion to go into recess until seven P M.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we are now back in open session. We're gonna have the confined meeting with the building committee and the board selectmen, so I'm gonna kick it over to our moderator, Mike McQ, to call to order the building committee meeting.
Thanks. So the building committee currently does not have a chairman, that's why I've been asked to call the building committee's meeting to order. It appears to be seven oh one from this angle. And I'm just gonna read down quickly the list of members who are on the building committee to establish who's here and whether or not the committee has a core. The list is alphabetical, Bob Alderson.
Here.
Harry Ashley.
Here.
Alfred Barrows.
Yeah.
Nicole DeVigna.
Here.
Cheryl Estrella.
Here.
Mark Fornishari. Absent. Jared Zager.
Here.
Bob Jost. Absent. Paul Lubin.
Here.
Mike McQ, here. Mary Rizendis Brown.
Here.
Paul Sadik.
Here.
Charlie Sullivan.
Here.
Kent Wilkins.
Here.
Deb Petty.
Here.
And Bob Jost just walked in.
Here.
So Mark Fornishari appears to be the only person who is absent. The first item on the building committee's agenda is to elect a chairman, which would be appropriate so that somebody can coordinate the rest of this. I'll open the floor if the building committee wishes to nominate a chairman of any kind. Paul.
Let's nominate Bob Jost.
Okay, Paul Lubin nominates Bob Jost. Is there a second?
I second.
Cheryl seconded that. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none for chairman of the building committee, Bob Jost. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, hold on a minute, this, only the building committee's voting on this. Let's try this again. Building committee people, all in favor of Bob Jost as the chairman?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I know, Bob is wishing he'd stayed in the hallway another minute. So Bob is elected by a vote of fourteen to one in that case. Uh, no, I'm sorry, thirteen to one, because there wasn't one absent. Did the building committee have on its agenda to elect anybody else, vice chairman or secretary or anything like that, or is that part? Oh, thank God. So Bob, you can sit up here now and I'll go back to the back.
I'm not even, uh, work clothes, it's terrible.
Yeah, don't worry about it. Nothing like being dropped.
Is there any evidence? I feel unprepared. Let me go, Bob. Number nineteen. Thank you. Discuss the council on agent, the council on agent petition.
Do you have a petition? Okay, whatever it is.
They have intended, was the chance I had to petition.
So this is a joint meeting, so we can help
Yeah.
Thank you.
Facilitate it while
Deb, wanna kind of bring us where we are right now?
So there was a petition given after the warrant was closed for the last town meeting. It's really not a, uh, it doesn't, it's not a petition that asks to go on a town meeting. Some, it's sort of a petition to the selectmen from the C O A to get their building built now. I'll read the short version of the petition, but it's basically signed by many people. We are the undersigned, are in favor of immediate construction of a new, a new C O A building. We call on the Free Town Selectmen to implement Act of Three of October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, special town meeting as approved by the voters. Hire a project manager to plan a new C O A building using the one point one million already approved by the voters. Locate a parcel of land adequate to accommodate the C O A building and add a late and and a later addition. And build the C O A building now with provisions to later add the library to it. So this was something that we saw, we got right in probably May-ish. And we haven't publicly really addressed it and I thought it would be a good time to sort of circle back to this. It lends itself to a lot of discussion about the C O A and the library, joint building, and there's a lot of history there. And maybe I Um and maybe I can give a little bit of history and and just for uh just for informational purposes. The COA uh put a petition out of goal for through town meeting and got five hundred fifty thousand dollars to activate the feasibility study thing to add on to the COA building. They created a COA subcommittee, the COA subcommittee met and decided that they didn't want necessarily an addition to the COA building, but instead wanted a new building. Or either wanted to knock down the existing building or they wanted a new building. Um that was different than what had been proposed and approved by the selectmen, so it needed to go back to the building committee, that happened. In the meantime, the library committee, planning committee was meeting because they need a new building. And they had a committee, uh library trustees, planning committee. Um and the two committees ultimately met and voted to build, to to join together and build one new building. Now, the selectmen have not voted on how they'd like to proceed and so tonight we're gonna try to get a little bit of direction, but so that's how we ended up with moving forward with a joint building as opposed to the COA addition or a new library, it's 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 sort of a joint building. Everything was moving, so that kind of slowed everything down because now we're looking at something different. Then the chairman of the the building committee has resigned, so in order to get things moving, we thought we'd meet tonight, get a new chairman, sort of discuss this petition and the process of what it takes to build a new building and what needs to happen. And that sort of all lends itself to what the discussion is tonight about how we're gonna move forward um with with the with what our needs are for the town, so.
Maybe also at the same time explain, because I I was earlier, with the um the article that's related to this.
So w- once we, we 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 take, we sort of tabled that for right now.
Yeah.
But one of the articles that's suggested to be on the town warrant is to reclassify some of the funds that were cla- were set aside to do the design build um for the new COA. In order to use it for a COA slash library building, it needs to be reclassified. So if we don't do that in October, um we will have to wait till June, not sure how long the process will take to get this ball moving, but we 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 will need the funding for the for the design build of this new joint building. So there is an article that we might wanna discuss before it's approved by the selectmen to go to to the um October town meeting.
Now, some of the funds, half the funds that were appropriated were appropriated by?
Petition.
Petition. Mm-hmm. And now you're gonna be able, without, that has a petition article that was passed, are you gonna be able to reappropriate those funds?
So I have reached out to town council and he said, yes, you can reappropriate them, but I'm, I only, because I wasn't sure when I wrote the warrant article, I only put the five fifty that the town voted at the last.
The second five fifty.
The second five fifty, and that's what it was for, for design build.
And that was on October's, a year ago October.
Yes, it was October.
October eight, yeah, eighteen.
But either, we can, we can reappropriate the whole one point one million and we can amend that article, I just, I I know there is a lot of um trepidation and uh, you know, some COA members that they still want in addition to their building, so um I I I don't know that we're at that point to make that decision, but we'll probably hear from seniors tonight about that. And that's where we're at with that.
So you don't have any clue about financing yet?
So.
Or or maybe, you know, some some of the widest parameters as far as what this is gonna cost? And what it's gonna cost the taxpayers.
It's hard to say what it's gonna cost when we don't know exactly what we're building, right? We we need to get things together, but I will tell you, I have done some homework. My thought process is the police station costs roughly twelve million dollars, it's twenty four thousand square feet. If we could do something similar in size of the town, um the first floor being COA slash library. The second floor to be a future space for either the town hall or whatever space we might need. Would uh would be, I I, this one, you know, the police station has a lot of um electronic details that a regular building wouldn't have. So I would be hopeful we could build it to a similar cost with what we have in stabilization, uh which right now is about five million. And we, I'm hoping, I don't know what free cash is yet. Um we realistically can borrow four million without raising taxes. I think we could almost get to that, if if, you know, I think perimeter, I I would think twelve million is where we wanna stay, so I think you wanna use, in my opinion, use that budget and back into what we can get.
Yeah, so you're gonna borrow four million, you're not gonna pay it back, is that how it's gonna go?
No, you're gonna pay it back with a low raise tax.
So it is gonna be an impact on the taxpayer.
But it's not like raise taxes. It's it's still gonna be, you know, um and so, and and to preface all of this, right? I I put out a procurement for a feasibility study to look at all of the buildings. Town hall, libraries, um COA, also the old police station.
Fire.
Um. And I wanna say that's.
Fire, fire.
Fire, uh the fire is a different feasibility.
Yeah.
But to to come up and look at all of the towns' buildings, look at all of our needs, determine what can be reused, what cannot be reused, and what scenarios make the most sense for our our staffing and our needs. In other words, do we do a COA slash library building and renovate the town hall? Do we do a COA library new town hall? Do we do a new s- library town hall and and add on to the COA? There's a lot of scenarios that can work, but we only have one pot of money. And so I think my my procurement to them is to give us scenarios with cost, with dollars. And then hopefully we can come back to the taxpayers and say, what do you wanna see in your town and what do you wanna pay for?
Okay, so you're still in the end of if what we're talking about is no matter what, we can always get an addition on to the existing council on agent building that they originally wanted, is that correct?
So.
I, you know, I think that's.
So one of the things I will say is I remember from the original meeting we had in regards to that was whatever the value of the building is, which was two hundred and something thousand dollars, if we spend more than thirty thousand dollars on, uh thirty percent, not thirty thousand, thirty percent, we have to bring everything up to code, so we would have to sprinkle the building, we would have to put an elevator in. There would be certain things, e- even though it seems kind of crazy, because there's access points above, you know, at both floors because of the way it's built, but but it doesn't matter, they said you have to have an elevator in between, that was from the architect, so that is something that would inevitably have to come into play when you decide about.
Well, I mean, you're talking about a two-story building, you know, as as far as, as something as big as the police station. You'd have to, if you wanted to use the upper levels, you'd have to put an elevator in that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I'm just saying as far as adding to this.
All of this would be additional cost above and beyond just what a regular building would be.
Mm-hmm, I'm I'm just saying as far as adding on to that building, strictly that, you know, that that was something that was.
So what what I'm hearing actually is, what you're talking about is possibly a twelve million dollar operation to get another building that would enclose the council on aging in the library, is that correct?
And and town hall.
And petition town, and petition town hall.
And add to the town hall, you know, what I'm talking about is we're still, we need to wait for the study to come back, is what I think. But I think in terms of dollar figures, I think it's ma- a twelve million dollar building is manageable right now, so I'm gonna preface that and back up a little bit. We've been working with the fire station, we've got a feasibility study done, because we know we need to add on to the fire station to deal with um the bunk rooms, because there's only one currently and we have male and female firefighters. So that has to be addressed first and foremost, so we're in the feasibility stage and the designs have come in at uh one point, one and a quarter million dollars up to five million, there's three different scenarios. We're still, we're just, we just got those this week and and we're getting them redone. Um and that has to be paid for as well, and that that'll be moving forward um once those designs will come to the building committee and and to the selectmen to decide how they move forward with that and then ultimately the voters.
Possibly, uh what you're talking about, possibly a five million dollar addition?
It won't be five million, no, that's, I'm just, there's three scenarios, you know, you get them.
Okay, I'm, but I'm just saying, even a million and a half for a bunk room?
Well, it's not one bunk room, no, it's the the, you know, based on.
How big, I I mean, how, just quite, how big an addition you're talking?
Uh fifteen hundred fifty square feet for six, I mean bunk rooms.
Hmm.
So that is still in the preliminary stage, that'll sort of take preference, um but we also have, you know, we have some funding for that and we'll but that is out there too, I know, there is a piece of this that we're gonna have to do first.
I got it.
I guess my like point, or my question on the this petition that we got is, you know, it's hire a project manager to build a COA wing using one point one million already approved, right, I get that. But what happens if we, if that, or it it, do we think that's even close to enough money to do an addition at the COA, given what Jared was just mentioning, where it all, everything has to go up to ADA compliance, if we even come close to that number, right? So what happens if we, that one point one does not go all the way to do, to cover the addition?
Well, we knew a year ago what would, what the three options were, we did the same thing a year ago, we did the three options.
I remember this, yep.
Everybody picked option, I think it was option two, if I remember correctly, correct me back there, but, which was the wasn't tear it down, build a new one, but it wasn't a small addition that they were asking for originally, it was something in between, made the building more feasible. It was ADA compliant, because that was one of the first things Andy, the architect, had discussed with us, that soon as you touched that building, it's gonna have to come compliant.
Yep.
Um so we knew all that going into it, the five hundred thousand number was a a low number to begin with. Over a million and a half, you have to have um O- OPM, that's state law, as you all know. So there's a couple hundred thousand dollars in debt right there, just into that. So the number we had settled on, which was a fair estimate, I actually refreshed the numbers back in March, February, March, was about three point one million dollars. Um that was what the number was gonna be needed to 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 do just the COA component of it and build it up to what they what they were expecting, so the one point one wasn't a milli- enough.
Yeah, I guess it.
They were short about two million bucks.
That, and that sounds right to me, that I just wanted to address that with the petition, just to make sure we're all on the same page, like.
They had, on their own, went um ahead, the ou- outside of this, when they put their article on, but this was, that article was two thousand nineteen? I think it said it on here.
Yep.
Yes.
Twenty nineteen.
It was two thousand nineteen that uh petition article went on for the five hundred fifty thousand. It wasn't necessarily, I wanna, I don't wanna say it wasn't realistic, because there was things, not it was a small addition, but if you're gonna have to bring it to compliance, there was a, there was a significant chunk there that wasn't included in that, to compliance, so their number was closer to this one point one million to do what they wanted to do.
Mm-hmm.
Um so this number, as we all know, building expenses have gone crazy the last eight months or so. You know, she she applied was fifty five, sixty dollars, she applied with, so with those, those weren't built into these numbers. Um this num- just this, just this number, you would get a very small addition. Um I don't know if it'd be the addition they originally were hoping for, uh when they, when they put the article together back in two thousand nineteen, uh three years ago.
Mm-hmm.
That's just the history lesson of it.
Yeah.
That doesn't change it to where we are now.
Yep.
I I think personally, looking at it from this side, uh where we need to be is is the feasibility study, to see exactly what we're talking about, um see where things shake, so it's, I mean, it's gonna shine some light on it, we we had a two thousand, in two thousand fourteen, we had that feasibility study, I know Deb and I have discussed it in the past.
Mm-hmm.
Um that, I think there was fifty thousand in this last um town meeting to refresh that.
Yes.
Um.
Yep, I, we have some funding, but also, and also um Representative Carol Fioler has given us uh an earmark of seventy five thousand to
Right.
put towards the town hall feasibility study and paint the old schoolhouse. So there'll, there'll be uh some funding maybe with that.
So globally, that it looks at the town and all your vis- all your building needs and where you sit currently with all your building needs, this was two thousand seventeen, I think it was?
Fourteen.
No, no, in two thousand seventeen, when we revised that, when we, when we looked at it again, we had them come in for a presentation in front of the the building committee. Um this was the building that was most important, the heating system wasn't, we we had just put sixty, the town had just put sixty five thousand dollars into the heating system over on on the police station, because it wasn't functioning. The old police station, so this was deemed by the building committee at that time to be the most important building. And then we were gonna try to tackle the town hall and and go through, go through the order. Since then, things have changed, buildings changed, you know, what the town has access to has changed a little bit. Um so I I, in my opinion, a new uh feasibility study would be, definitely would be, a- and even just the COA project where it sits, you can have that freshened up and see exactly what the budget would be, have what they want done, what we all agreed on back in September last year done. How much that would cost, what's the real number for that? Because like you said, you do have in stabilization, capital stabilization, half million, uh five hundred million, five million dollars.
I have to, I didn't double check that, but. Yeah, and then we do, I mean, we do have, I mean, and then we have the one point one for this building.
But to Bob's point, you know, there is stuff coming down the tracks, we, you know, you you have to do something with the fire station project, you do have to do something with schools. You know, there is stuff coming down the tracks that um, you know, we can't spend all our money, because then we'll be going for overrides and we know how that works, so. Nobody wants to see that.
You know, I think that we have to be reasonable, and one of my thought processes is, I feel strongly that we have three competing needs and they all need, there's not, I can, oh, they don't really need any, they do. Every building here, other than the police station, has a need, and a very legitimate need, none of them can wait ten years. So I feel like we have one bite at this apple with this money that we we have to get as much of our needs met as we possibly can. And that sort of was my outlook and when when I, when I started really looking at everything when I came to the town and saying, yes, we we need some work down in the town hall, yes, we need the library uh that functions, and and yes, the COA needs space, so they can have ha- utilize it and and do things for our seniors. Um so we need to get as much accomplished as we possibly can with the money that we do have.
Well, if you're gonna have a wish list, I have a wish list, but the reali- the the reality is that you're kneecapped by funding unless you go back to the taxpayers, I mean, unless you've got some, unless you've got some other funding that we, you know, whatever, some kind of funding. I can't, I can't see how you can attack all three of these things unless you go out four, five, six years. How, how, I mean, you know, how are you gonna do that? If you're talking about, you know, three point one, and you're talking about, uh let's say conservatively speaking, one point five for the uh fire department, and whatever else that the town needs as far as the other small buildings, I know that the DPW needs some work. But, you know, you've almost eaten up the five million just there, never mind the town hall and, you know, some of this other stuff. But, and I understand that there's a priority here. That's the reason that we're in this building now, because we got together and said, this was the most important building that we needed to get going, was the police station. So that we could do away with all of that mess over there. But again, we've still got that mess over there to contend with, but I mean, to do something with that. But, you know, again, there's, it's gonna boil down to dollars and cents and funding. A feasibility study, I think, is the only thing that we can do right now to realistically look at the future and say, in two years, five years, maybe ten years, this is what we, where we wanna be, and this is how much it's gonna take to get there. I mean, you can present it before the, you know, the people at the town meeting, but I'd be careful about that in today's economic atmosphere. You don't wanna go too fast, too quick.
Well, as you know, municipal uh stuff doesn't go quickly, everything takes time, unfortunately.
Absolutely, yeah.
So it is, and and it is what it is.
You gotta pick your poison, I mean, we don't have enough money to do everything, we we just need to prioritize and pick your poison. I mean, the money for the council on agents is already approved for the one point one.
It sounds, Deb, like this, it sounds like they're saying that if we shoot for the moon, so if we could, well, twelve million to back it up a little bit, we we can try and secure the funds, build a building that will satisfy two needs with knowing that a third is coming. That sounds, it sounds like it's better to go bigger rather than trying to piece these together, because that seems like it's groups falling apart. Is that by trying to piece things together that we can't solidify something? But if you, we follow what you were saying originally, I believe that's what you were saying, right? Is that you anticipate the twelve million, kind of, maybe a little less, to do another building like this, but like you, you can automatically put the library in the COA and that.
Yeah.
With possibly expanding, you know, using the second floor, if they don't use in this building, far the town hall, so.
Yeah, annex the town hall or some scenario like that.
I mean, it's a big ask, but if people understand why we're asking that, and why people need to have, why we need to fund something that big, I think that they could, that's the smartest way to go about it.
Right, and that was the whole purpose of the feasibility study, we need to know what's what, what's gonna cost, like Bob said, construction costs have come through the roof. We need to know as a town, what can we realistically afford, right? And we do have needs, we we want our seniors to have what they want, we want our library folks to have what they want, what we want, we want, we want, but we have to make sure we do the proper way. That feasibility study will get us there. Is it what we all want? Probably not.
How fast can we do all this?
Yeah.
Because uh.
We've already spent three years.
None of us won't be here in, but it's, you know, years.
Right, just like people in school, kindergarten will be there as well, we understand that, absolutely.
Uh that would be great.
In our lifetime, yeah.
And that's our goal, that's, we don't wanna, not gonna prolong anything, I believe Danbury put out the solicitation or to get the feasibility study going.
But three, you've already been three years doing a feasibility study, and I don't see you any further ahead than you were at the beginning. And how many years do you? And how many years do you think we have left? The seniors that were that were asking for an improvement on the C O A. Are you gonna do it in our lifetime?
Our goal is yes.
All of you are so much younger than we are, right? So you'll probably all still be here when you do decide.
You'll benefit from our fighting. That's what's going on after. You guys are gonna benefit from what we have to settle for feasibility and another feasibility and another feasibility. You're talking about slamming a library and the C O A together. I heard from someone this morning that does exercises in Mansfield. They have a theory new one that they have the C O A here, an opened room, let's say a gym, okay? And then the opposite one, okay, the library. This here is a joint room to be shared, okay? They said, well, this was gonna be perfect because that space gives this one space. If they're doing something, it's not gonna interrupt the library, the silence that's needed in a library, okay? Now they're finding out the library feels that this is too big a room for the senior center to have, so we wanna expand into it, okay? That's not fear either. Okay, I mean, libraries, come on, be serious. We've got Kindles, we've got cell phones, we've got everything that you can read a book, okay? How many computers do you need in a library?
So so we backtrack, let me jump on that.
No, I'm I'm just saying, you're gonna be realistic in this. Right now, you're saying, well, we wanna do this, we're gonna do that, and this would be nice. But somebody's gonna take over one or the other, and then you're back to square one of, oh, well, we have to add an addition, we have to do this. It's gonna be figured out before, before.
Can everyone just also just, just aside, just uh please state your name and where you live.
Oh, I'm sorry, Catherine Tidall.
Yeah, just going forward, I understand. Okay, thank you very much.
And you're absolutely right. And in the purpose of feasibility study, again, last one was conducted in twenty fourteen, right? Things have changed since twenty fourteen, right? As far as cost wise.
No, no, excuse me, twenty twenty.
The feasibility study?
Yep. Uh, on November twenty twenty, Compass Group Architecture presented a feasibility study to the selectmen.
For the C O A.
For the C O A. The fee, I think we're talking with the building.
The two thousand fourteen I was referencing was a town one, cause Deb had brought a townwide one. So we had done one townwide in two thousand fourteen.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Addressed all the town buildings. That's what I was referencing when I talked.
And and the great thing about the feasibility studies, so that that doesn't happen, so that, let's say you allocated eight thousand square feet, they're allocating eight thousand square feet. That's your eight thousand square feet, not anybody else's. It it gives you those boundaries you need to make sure what you're discussing in this and stating, that doesn't happen. So we are trying to plan for the future, make sure we're doing it correctly. Just like this building, let's let's take this building. This building is built for tomorrow. All right, if you ever need to expand, they can go upstairs, throw some paint on the sheetrock, and you're expanded. And that's what we're talking about. Building one, building the building, right? To build for tomorrow so that, like you said, when we get older, it's still gonna be there for us as well. All right?
We might get it too.
Oh, I want you to get it as well. We all do. Everybody up here is on your side. We all want it. But we have to make sure we're doing it in the proper manner that it's done correctly so that everyone is not walking away with a knee heartburn. And I understand you've been away for three years and and we we know that. We don't wanna continue this, but to do it right, feasibility study is the is the best motion right now. And that's it's it's happening.
Paul on the map.
I'll say, Mr. Moore, listen. What do the seniors, there's a group of seniors here, right?
Yep.
You've you've written all these letters. What do you want done? That's what I'd like to hear. I'm a senior, by the way. What do you want done?
Sure.
Figure out what you can do it. Instead of going through this, I want hours on the building committee of this same stuff, open, open. What do you want done? And let's see if this is feasible. Tell the tell the selectmen what you want done.
Go ahead, Grace.
Grace Maderas from Paul Avenue. Um, we would like the free town selectmen to, number one, implement Article Three of the October eighteen, uh, two thousand twenty one special town meeting as approved by the voters. Number two, hire a project manager to plan a new C O A building using the we know it's not enough, but using uh the one point one million already approved by the voters. Locate a parcel of land adequate to accommodate the C O A building and a later addition for the library if the voters then decide they want to do this. And lastly, to build a C O A building now with provisions to later add to it for the library or the town hall or whatever. But the seniors have been waiting since uh two thousand seventeen. When they first asked to have an addition or something to improve the condition of the obsolete building that we have. That when it was built, it was wonderful. My parents were involved with it. Uh, there was a gentleman named Sam Ferry who worked miracles to get the town to build that building. And now we're at the point that that building is not enough for us. We started asking in two thousand seventeen. Now, just to bring things up a little bit more to the present. On uh May ninth, we met here when the selectmen had a meeting. And uh at that time, they were supposed to be having the library's uh senior center committee get together. And that was stable because you weren't quite sure how you wanted to work that. Um, Mr. Loeb, you said at that time that the following month you would have the answers that you needed, that you didn't have. Now, that was on May ninth.
That's correct. I remember those conversations because we're
We're here today and we still don't have any answers. So I'm going back to what my husband said back there a while ago. How long are we supposed to wait? We're not going to be, I'm eighty one years old. How much longer am I supposed to wait, you're right?
So you're absolutely correct. On May ninth, we discussed the subcommittees that were in in place at the time, which was the C O A, library, which voted to combine the building. Right? So that was what the marching were us for us as selectmen to combine the building. This petition came out shortly thereafter. Right? So by by looking at all the information that we've gotten as selectmen, the feasibility study is needed to make sure that we're doing it one hundred percent the proper way. I'm not trying to delay anything. But but I was correct at that May ninth meeting, we needed more information. And we, the information comes from that feasibility study that was approved at the June meeting, at the annual town meeting. So once that information comes in, then we can begin moving. Right now, we don't even know where we're gonna build this thing, this addition. We don't know, um, we keep saying, just saying, the council of aging. The council of aging and the library voted together as a subcommittee to combine the building. Right? So we we can't forget that piece. That library is still in play. I understand the frustration. Trust me, as the new guy coming in, I understand the frustration. Not trying to blow smoke on anybody's anywhere, but the fact of matter is this. Facts are facts. We need to make sure that everybody, not just our seniors or our library folks or or anybody, we're doing it the proper way. And the feasibility study per our new chair is the proper way, right? It's, it gives us the right information to make sure we're doing it correctly. Not to throw Bob on the buzzer and these.
No, we didn't take him vote. That was my opinion.
Right, right, his opinion only, his opinion. But we need to make sure that, all right, so we have one point one appropriated, we're looking at three and change, maybe it's more, we don't know yet. What if it comes back, we enter into this one million dollar agreement with a a building contractor, and they come back, it's ten million dollars because of all the construction costs. Are we on the hook for that? So we have to make sure we're doing it correctly.
Could you hire a project manager that was voted at the town meeting and have the project manager try to get going with this?
So I I is that part of the feasibility to get the appropriate purpose?
So I mean.
Uh, so it's the selectmen's meeting also, but go ahead, Charlie.
Whoever wants to.
Charlie Sullivan.
Yes, um, my question is this, are we, is the question really, are we going to have to go as a building committee on a feasibility study? If that is so, I make a motion that we uh do a feasibility study of all town buildings to see where we are, to get some answers from professionals on what we're what we're facing. So I would make that motion.
I don't think that's a good idea. I think that, I think I think the seniors have waited long enough.
There's a motion on the floor to vote for a feasibility study. Do I have a second for the motion? No second being heard, the motion fails.
I think that, I think the 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 second option that we picked for the council on aging to be under, it was under one point one, I think. The original was twenty by thirty, the second one was fifty by fifty by thirty.
I think it was uh one point nine million without, and that's before project uh the foreign O P M. So you probably at two point five.
It was, it was uh
I think seriously, it was two point nine.
Was two point nine.
Well, then you should ask the, we we need to ask the seniors.
We'd have to look back on it.
What they would, what they would be satisfied with. Do they absolutely want a new building or which is gonna be, it's not gonna be easy.
That number wasn't a new building. That was adding a substantial addition to the building.
That's correct.
Was there.
We've done that. We've done that. I had a C O A subcommittee. And they voted, they came together, we were ready to, I had the R I P for an O P M ready to go.
Right.
That was the next step. And they voted that they did not wanna do an addition. They wanted a new building. They wanted to knock down the existing building and build a new building. And I said, wait a minute, that is not what we were, was in front of us. We need to go back to the building committee and redo this. In the meantime, I have libraries who needs a new building. So they came back together and voted. So you're you're trying to go down a road that we've already been down. They emphatically said no.
Again.
Wayne James Freetown, former member of the Council on Aging Subcommittee. Um, and some of my my recollection, much of what is said is accurate, but there are some discrepancies from what I recall. And what Debbie was just saying, I agree with a hundred percent, that the joint meetings between the library representatives and the C O A representatives, after many hours of discussing what's the best options and knowing that you can't satisfy everybody, but what's the best option to move forward? It was decided and voted on to the majority vote to move forward with a joint venture. Call it a library, call it a senior center, call it a community center, call it innovation center, whatever you wanna call it. But that project was where we wanted to head. Now, that was back in February, okay? Um, those committees were abandoned, dissolved, and there was there was a meeting of the building committee who, uh, at the time, the existing chairman uh presented the suggestion that a new committee be formed, thirteen people uh with representation from various precincts, the library board, the council on aging board, and move forward from there. And then the discussion went to say, well, what would be the objective of that subcommittee when we really don't know what we can do? And that's where the talk of, if we wanna call it a feasibility study, but I clarified for me at the last meeting in June, where didn't we appropriate as townspeople seventy five thousand dollars to initiate a review of all of the town properties east and west of Chase Road to see what the master plan should be? You can't build a house and then say, I wanna put a garage, and now you went too far to the right and you can't do it because of setbacks. We need to know where we can put some, in my opinion. Has any steps been taken on that seventy five thousand dollar appropriation?
So that's the procurement that I'm talking about that's just gone out to get the construction.
That's sixty days ago, so nothing's been done. That's how slow the wheels turn.
Yeah.
It was two.
And that's how.
It was two different articles, one to assess the campus.
One for the land and one for the building.
And one for the buildings, yes.
And if I just piggyback it to the chairman, the the option that was, there were many options presented or or considered uh by Compass, I believe it was, and only one was, one, only one was given to us at town meeting. But there were various options for not only the the creation of a new C O A, I believe it was, maybe C O A and library, there were three options. Land between the existing elementary school and the police.
The op, the the options that were originally given, the three options were given just for the C O A. Correct. It was, the the library came afterwards. The C O A, the three options that that we all chose from as as a building committee was just the C O A.
And the C O A expansions had multiple options that weren't necessarily um, they were only found on the website. And there was a ten by thirty expansion, a twenty by fifty, a twenty by seventy. Those are all out there for consideration, and that's what the C O A Subcommittee, as well as the library, who came in saying, we would like ten thousand square feet, but we all came together not as architects, not as designers, and that's what a project manager would do, but saying something like maybe six thousand square feet for each of us would be something acceptable, something we could work.
So so actually, that's not a project manager. A project manager show where he represents you in the building process so to make sure this room was designed to these specs, and he comes in and says, well, that ceiling's two feet too low. These floors were supposed to be tile, not copper. That's what he's supposed to catch. You know, talk about an architect. He makes a mechanical plan to say, this is what you need for space because of this much washroom space. You need this many space for bathroom. He comes up with this mechanical floor plan. He brings that back to us and on the building committee. We look at that and say, okay, yep, that all makes sense, or this is superfluous, or this needs to be figured, you know, we have a special need because of this situation that we need this. He tweaks those that that plan, that mechanical space plan. Then we take that to another architect that actually builds the envelope around that and fits all that, what, all those spaces that you need into the the package that you have. So you might need three thousand square feet of um exercise room space. You might need five hundred square feet of bathroom space, all this thing. And he comes up with a study to figure all that stuff out. It's all in a computer program. Then we're how that all fits together. Maybe the bathrooms go here and this goes. That's a whole separate guy. He he comes and does that whole separate thing. And then from there, he also comes up with a number and says, this is what the number should be to build this building. This size roof because you're stacking it on top of each other versus laying it flat, needing an elevator versus not. All that comes in the next step. Then, once we go to actually build stuff, we have to the second phase is when the O P M comes in, cause he helps you review the plans and and that and also, but he doesn't come up with the plan, the architect does.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Uh, but you're right, that is all part of the process, and that's where some point we need to go, Mr. Sadek.
This gentleman said is absolutely accurate, a hundred percent accurate. Because I was on the library plan, was on uh
feeling.
Plan. We sat back here, we was in this room. We came to a consensus, we voted that this is the part of the way we're gonna go as a building committee. They made the recommendation to the existing building committee that happened to be here.
Hmm.
And that's where we thought we were going with a joint building. And now all of a sudden, everything changed. We're never gonna get anything done if these things keep on going this way.
Well, I don't think the selectmen decided not to go with a joint building. I think the selectmen was deciding to see if it's gonna be a joint building, how big the joint building is gonna be. And I I think it could be modularized.
I don't think that's what I'm hearing from the, from the seniors.
So and I guess the reason why I think it it generally here is the, you know, discussion on the council on aging petition. And, you know, when I got this petition, this is, I think it is kind of a curve ball for me. It's different what I thought the uh steps were going down, right? And then, you know, so now it's like, I guess the question is, and as you said, Mr. Sadek, is what what does the C O A want? I mean, I think that, I think my I mean, I might be jumping to conclusions here, but it seems like maybe folks at the C O A weren't happy with what the the sub, the their representation on the on the C O A Subcommittee um decided. And so this is a different approach, you know, outside of that Subcommittee. Is that, is that how we got to this point, or?
I I feel like it's wanting something fa, wanting something there and now, right? And I just don't, and I I I I completely relate to all of you, right? Like, it does seem like it's dragging on. I just don't wanna see something band-aided that you guys are like, oh, this is okay, but it's not enough, right? To do all that work to not, even if we started today with construction wise, I mean, Bob will tell you, right, it's gonna take forever. So it's not like it's regardless of however we approach it. It's not gonna be done in six months. So I think we just, to Deb's point, we got one, one chance to do it right, and I just wanna make sure we do it right.
I'm going back. Um, Jackie Keel, Pointe High Swobie Street Town. When we had the uh plans from the architect for the, if we were expanding the C O A at the town meeting, they showed the three propositions that they had. And I can't imagine who even would have made up that plan. They cut off all the windows so that the place that the seniors were gonna be in was gonna be a black hole. And the place that we're gonna put food in to storage was gonna have all the windows. So, you know, I was like, okay, what the hell is going on here? And when we, when I talked at the meeting and showed where it was, even the architect in the house, wow, that's a good point, that's a good point. Well, the architect, that makes no sense to me. So I said to him, well, could So I said to him, well, could somebody talk to me, when you people are having a meeting, could I hear about it somehow? Oh yeah, that's fine, we'll make sure, I have heard word, nothing from anybody. I have been aware that there's meetings going on, but I don't know where they are, or who's doing, on them, or what's going on. I don't understand, um if you can't, if a person's making up plans and they don't understand. That elderly people need light. They need sunlight, they need regular, they need ambient light. That's just so basic. You know, they have the elevator in the air and everything, but everything was put in a place that was blocking something. And the size of the building as it is, just is totally inadequate, period. There's not enough room to have a couple of things going on at the same time. We, when we first started the book club, we were sitting around the pool table. Hello, hello. I mean, it's, we do the best we can with what we have, and that's fine. And I'm not trying, I'm not worried about if it's finished before I'm dead, I don't care. But I would like it to be done so that it's usable. So that it's something that the town will have. And that we can enjoy. I love the library as much as anybody, so I'm happy with library too, that's great. But I just think that we have to look at it, is what do we really want here? You know, we wanna be able to assemble in the place, we wanna be able to, we play cards there every Monday afternoon. You have all of these things that you can do there and it's great. But we're getting, our whole population is getting older. Right now, eighteen percent of the population is sixty and older in Freetown, according to the last census. You know, it's twenty percent of the population is eighteen and under, you know, so we've got those two, and the rest of you are gonna have to pay for it.
We're glad, we're glad to pay for it.
But, you know, it, it's just something, we, we need to do the right thing, but we need to think about it. And say, what is it that we're doing there? And does this plan make sense for what we wanna do? That's the, my only thing that I just don't understand. You know, that's the thing that frightens me. As soon as I get that somebody's gonna get together and they're gonna make up a committee and they're gonna have feasibility and this person's gonna do this and that, and suddenly they're gonna. Give us a set of plans. I'm gonna look at them, go, really? That's the thing that bothers me.
Well, to, to your point, the last subcommittee meeting was the C O A library was held February, March timeframe. The, the follow-on meeting from that point on was at the, the May ninth meeting, we discussed maybe around that timeframe. To get it onto the annual warrant articles, which we did, we got feasibility study, and here we are, a couple of months down the road. So, you're right, we're not, we, we don't wanna rush anything, that's what the feasibility study does, it tells us where the windows go. Where the field capture goes, it tells us exactly how the architect envisions it, and then that C O A library subcommittee. Right, will then go, hey, we need to fix this, change that, working with the building committee. Alright, we, we wanna get this done, it's like, like, like we said, it's take us two months to get it on the street. To make sure it's written properly, make sure it's put out there properly, the funds are appropriated. Takes time, I, I hate to say that, but trust me, I wanna give you the everything, I wanna say, yes, yes, yes. I just can't, not, I can't, can't do it, not, we need to do it the right way, yes.
I've got a quick question.
Sure.
Uh back in April, we were told that there was gonna be a new uh building subcommittee to replace the one that disbanded, okay? Cause now it was going to be uh hot and hot, they were gonna have C O A and library, that was what had been technically decided, okay? And that was supposed to be in May, and they said, if you were interested, sign up for it.
Get the list right here.
Uh, okay, um I never heard anything and I had signed up for it. And I don't know, do they have a new subcommittee, is it, no?
Not, not yet, so you're absolutely correct, so at that same timeframe, we put out there for everyone to see, we, we needed people, library representatives. We were gonna appoint four, we needed council of aging representatives, we needed four. We needed large members, another four, and then, and a board of selectmen member, right? That was gonna be our, the committee, or subcommittee I should say, to then start planning, discussing, working with the building committee, and everything, all the powers that be.
That list, where was it?
What's that?
Where was that list?
Well, the list, everyone that wanted to be on the committee, uh contacted town hall.
Are you saying where was the?
Where was the list, because I signed.
And we want, we didn't appoint them, selectmen never appointed.
Right, no one's been appointed.
Okay, so again, I signed.
Mm-hmm.
And never got a, a, a notice like that, how many others?
Everybody.
Had signed up?
No, we haven't appointed.
We haven't appointed anybody, we have the names, correct, no one's been appointed.
We haven't appointed them, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Cause again, we got the petition, then we had to figure out, deal to, handle the petition, make sure that we're all on the same page. And then make sure that the feasibility study is moving forward. So like Deb said, paperwork's been done, we're moving forward, it just, it took two months to get to that point. And then that's, that's not an excuse, but our next step.
Yeah, this is another question.
That went to something next time.
When you say, what are you interested in having, okay? And she read the articles, cause that's her most important. But what if we had, I know this is gonna be, probably sounding goofy, but a wish list, okay? So that the subcommittee could say, well, we want a nice, good-sized room that we can do exercise, that they could have a rack and put weights on. And uh like we do drums alike, we, she wouldn't have to keep bringing all her equipment, they could be left over there, you know, that kinda thing. And I mean, we're not talking about swimming pools or anything like that, but the guys like to play pool.
Sure.
You know, where would they have their pool table, where would we have our meeting room that's big enough that I could stand up and actually put my hands up without worrying about going through the ceiling?
But we don't want that.
No.
Our, our shore people don't have that problem, but.
That's what I'm saying, you know, you saw me before, so.
I remember Andy, wasn't that part of it when?
That's part of the feasibility.
When he did, when he did the original.
Sorry, Jared, but part of the feasibility study is the person that get, the, the firm that gets hired will get, will come to each department and say, what's your needs? What size do we have, not even necessarily the size, what's your needs? We have so many visitors per day, we have this need, we have that need, and from there he'll design the space for that, for those needs. That's that whole mechanical plan of what, where I think, he doesn't necessarily put where it goes, he just says, okay, you need this space, this space, this space. Go speaks to the library, what do you need, we need this space, this space. Library built a different code than the C O A, cause it's written, it has to have fires and pressure, it has all that stuff.
I'm making an order, forty foot ceiling for you.
Thank you very much.
I'm putting it in there.
Mic's over there.
Yeah.
I think, um looking back at the agenda, and I have a new phone, I didn't realize I could see PDFs on it, so.
It doesn't flip open?
It does not flip open.
Welcome.
It seems to me, and maybe any others will disagree, that we're now kind of mixing and convoluting two different items on this agenda. Which was discuss the C O A petition and then discuss what to do next.
Yeah.
So coming under as a member of, I'm reading off the building committee agenda specifically right now. As a member of the building committee, I would like at this time to make a motion that the building committee recommend. This being part of the next step, recommend the selectmen to appoint that library, C O A joint subcommittee. And let this conversation move into that forum and get that.
That's a great idea.
Great idea, Mike.
So that is my motion, if anybody will second.
Motion being seconded, discussion on motion?
Can, can non-members, non-building committee members discuss that?
We, you can, well, technically it's a motion, so you shouldn't be discussing motion, but.
Can you have input? As, as a member of the previous subcommittee that ended up in total frustration because we concluded everything that we thought we could do. But we didn't have, we didn't have a target, we don't have something, a vision of what we're supposed to be doing, and I think. And that's what Carlos, the, the. The subcommittee was not appointed because it was first thought that it would be better to do the feasibility study. And say, here's what you can have, so that now the subcommittee can say, okay, now let's work with that. Otherwise, we got a blank page and we don't know if we can fill it.
So this motion was only to make the members of the subcommittee, not necessarily to empower them, they still have to be appointed, they still have to be sworn in. This is just, well, once they have a, a direction, they can move in that direction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. So again, we have motion made and seconded, discussion on motion. This votes only for the building committee members, all in favor?
Right.
Right.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carries unanimously. Do we need to poll or it's unanimous, Deb? It was pa, passing unanimously.
So now, we, we putting on, if these, today?
No.
Okay. So.
So I think we wanna just, we have the list.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
We have the list of people that were interested back in May, um maybe reach out to us and reiterate that you're still interested.
Can you post that somewhere or let people know? Who already sent in their thing, so.
Can you just repeat the makeup of this newly formed?
Yes, I can.
So, when we put it out there, we've March, April, May timeframe, we were looking for, to appoint four people from the library representatives.
Appoint four people from the council of aging senior representatives. Appoint four members at large, so townspeople that are not on those committees but from town, and then one board of select, one selectman from the board.
And I, if I remember correctly, the at-large members, we were trying to pull people from different precincts, so that way it wasn't just. Everyone from the Sonnet or everyone just from these Freetowns, trying to get some people from different parts of the town.
If you want, can read out the names that are there now, or you can buy afterwards, we can, we can discuss it afterwards, come on down, we'll talk about it. See if you're on the list, I have the list right here, yes, and afterwards we can discuss it afterwards.
I mean, anybody at this point wants to put their name in, can put their name in, so that way, uh. If, if, if you're already on, great, if you're not, and you're, you're interested, put the name up and consider.
Okay.
Question.
Yeah.
To the building committee, uh as a member of course, the, the. There are municipal buildings in the state that have been built in the last five years, libraries, senior centers, and like. Are they ever surveyed to see, hey, you know? Shaboyan's got a great library that would fit our needs, or a council of aging one?
So when we built this building, that's one of the things with the building committee did, we went on a couple of field trips.
Yes.
And we all went to a cushion, the newer built police station, we didn't go to any, we went to field trips to uh Cushing and we went to field trips to Swansea, uh Swansea, was Swansea, wasn't it? We went to a couple, a couple of different police stations, got some ideas, what worked, what didn't work, what to stay away from, hey, this. The reason for the second floor was the Swansea police station, they said, you know, we did this, the elevator shaft. The, the, this building's built so we can expand, one of those things is an elevator shaft, they showed us, hey, what we did is we made it into a closet space, but it's here. It's not, there's, there's buyers, but they're not permanent, we can always take them up with an elevator in and we see, trying to later on do those things, we have a mechanical room. That was a great idea, we, we incorporated that into our plan when we, when we did this building. Some things, uh the, the media, this room was supposed to be hooked up to media, so if there's a national emergency. Uh the selectmen can come in, sit in here, this could be the U O C, the emergency command room. The, the press could actually come and plug into the thing, that was all part of, I think it was a cushion that we saw that, that was all part of that purpose, so there is those. There's also stand, specials, the standards, the architects, best practices the architects use, that the state requires some things. Other things are just best practices and standards that they, they use and they build into the plans when they do it. That's why it's so much more expensive to build municipal buildings versus residential, and even huge commercial buildings, it's so much cheaper. You know, this building I think was seven hundred dollars a square foot, eight hundred dollars a square foot, it was a lot of money.
I think five sixty, I think was the.
Yeah, with those extra costs, with all the computerization, so.
I, I was chairman of the library planning committee, we visited six towns, a library, new libraries. Similar, it was towns similar in size to ours, and one combined C O A library, and, and we, we have reports of, of all those visits. So we did what you're, what you're suggesting.
So it'd be good if that, that subcommittee goes and visits the areas that had those type things, that's been built, like you said, the last five best practices. Good, good answer.
I knew you guys did that as well, you were involved with me in one of your meetings.
So, eight o'clock now, do you think that, I mean, I think we're gonna have that subcommittee created, which is great. Um we should continue on, I mean, I, I know there's a couple other agenda items for the building committee.
Yeah, the, the next, the discussion, you have a discussion of council on aging library, which we, I think we've, we've.
Yeah.
Put that in those, fire station. Can we get an update on what's going on with that and where we stand in that, you have a feasibility study back for us?
So we have, we have just gotten the preliminary draft feasibility study. We've asked uh Andy from Compass to tweak it because uh it's to meet all the needs that the fire department needs today. We sort of need something in between two scenarios that he's given us. And to get back to us with dollar months, he said I'd have that within two weeks. Um and so we will be, we can share that once we get the final and, and it makes sense with the, myself, Jeff. And the fire department and Andy, um and if, if you would like to be involved, Lisa was originally involved in all of that.
And this is particularly to station three, or is this, do they look at everything?
Station three.
Just station three?
Just the station, just, and you know, they, he's done extensive work already, um yeah, sent out questionnaires. He's been to the facility, he's done the existing conditions facility, he's done a lot of work in what fire stations need. And he's met with um Harry and the chief and the fire department and, you know, really got the sort of prioritization list of what they feel like they really need and the order that they need it. And he's working on coming up with design that can meet that and, and, and keep a budget that isn't too, um, too much. One of the, the final scenarios he gave us was five million dollars, I mean, we can't do it, we don't have it. Not with all the competing needs we have of the town, um it just isn't feasible. So he's working on that, we should have that soon. Uh Representative Rodricks has promised me an earmark of fifty thousand dollars to help go into design. And so I, you know, that'll be the next step for that project, once we get a feasibility study and bring it to the board and make a presentation and they vote.
Would it be us to have a subcommittee for that, or do you think it's not, why don't they have a subcommittee?
I don't think it would, I think it would actually slow that process down where um, you know, that's sort of a very specialized area. It's not, residents don't use the fire station so much, it's really the fire personnel. So I, I don't feel so, but if that's something that you'd like to entertain.
It will, it made this building a little bit easier, cause it was a smaller group trying to go and see different plans and see how things were. Like we said, we did the, not the entire building committee, but police substation, uh subcommittees when did field trips and those things. And if that is required, or if the fire department would like to do something, or. And if you guys wanna see what it looks like and what you're getting for your money, it makes it a little bit easier.
I mean, it's, it's an addition, not, it's not a building, you know, I mean, it's not this.
Right.
Yeah.
But five million dollars.
It won't be five million dollars.
No, but.
Mr. Sadek.
I think that would just slow things down for the fire department, they're gonna get this thing done. And we're just money, money up the wall, I think, they probably get the thing under control as it is, working with the town administration.
That's fine. It's not on the agenda anyhow, so we're gonna shoot it tonight as you like.
Um I'll bring you back the feasibility studies when they're writing down from what we're.
So that's, that's pretty much all you have for the fire station, the last one is discussion and vote to declare the police station complete, where are we with that?
As far as I know, the police station is complete, Carl and Chief Abbott has said that he's done. Andy D Kane has said it's done, I don't, I don't know if anybody else has any comments, but as far as I know, it is done. I just wanted a formal vote to say it's done, so that uh maybe some can be disbanded, all of the. There was a few change orders, they've been approved, they were, that were approved by the subcommittee and they're pretty much uh finished and approved to be, you know, paid and this fund set aside for it, so.
They've been in the building for a year now, right?
Over a year. Longer than, I think December.
Twenty twenty.
Yeah, thank you.
Who's got the punch list for it?
They were in the building December twenty twenty?
Yes. The punch list is all been taken care of as far as, you know, my, my communications.
So, I can't, we're making something for the vote, microphone, we need to get. When we, we had some money.
Oh, there was, it, it's money left.
So this is, so we, so we are, I did the procurement for this room to be fitted as well for audio. We use peg access money that comes from the cable that gives the town some money, so it's, so it's just, uh we just worked on that. We're hoping they, their microphones are actually on backorder, so when they get the equipment, they'll be outfitting this room to be sort of a hybrid Zoom room. So that is also in the works, but not coming out of the police money, it's peg money that we get from the cable communications companies, so. There's a revolver fund that can only be used for this type of new stuff.
Yeah, we get quite a bit of money from them every year.
Because it's a real need, and when you have a group this size, it's a real need.
Oh, and we, the, the funding, so um at town meeting, if you recall, I, I moved a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars out of the fund, the peg access fund. To be utilized, the proposal I just got was seventy-two thousand dollars, so we're moving forward, we have the funding and I would say late fall it'll be complete. But that's not coming out of the police.
I would make a motion.
Out of, out of there.
Yeah, if that thing all squint away, I would make a motion that we, we quit. Yeah, we gotta think all squared away, I would make a motion that we declare the police station complete.
Second.
Motion made, it's seconded, any discussion on the motion to declare the police station complete? Hearing none, all in favor, uh, building committee only, please.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Abstained? Motion carries unanimously.
Vote for the building committee to adjourn, cause it's a toss of this agenda.
Can I, can I interject first?
Go ahead.
We're entertaining a warrant article that repurposes the money, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the, the COA uh, building money to the COA slash library building, so it, so it can be utilized, uh, for design of the process. I, I think that we might wanna get your, the, the input before the selectmen vote to place that on the town warrant or not.
That specifically is not on the agenda, though, that's outside the school. That would be on our Board of Selectmen meeting agenda, not, not the board. That the building, it's not the building, please, John, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, I guess.
I mean, it's one of the next steps, but, okay.
Sophie.
Okay, you can adjourn.
Jared, we, Karen, well, we can't have a forum, we do it, that'd be open, it's facing open, meanwhile. That, there's nothing else coming properly before the board, the board will entertain, that committee will entertain a motion to adjourn. I make a motion. Did you make a motion, Mike?
Yes.
Was there a motion to second?
Yes.
See, I'm not good at this, though, I feel like you're, you're honest with the twenty sat in the back.
Well, can we make a motion that Mike takes over?
Absolutely. I'll second.
I object.
Third. Paul's fault, I was sitting back, you know? Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion, hearing none, all in favor? Motion opposed?
I was waiting for you to show up.
Alright, so.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thanks, everybody, so with that, um, yeah, so, I'm gonna, uh, entertain a motion to include all of these special, uh, town committee warrants that we discussed, so the ten eighteen twenty-two, which town, please.
Motion made? Second. All in favor? Aye. My father said, and I said, Dad, don't buy these free bananas, cause you quickly, probably not eat them when they get raw.
So, motion to vote such coming warrant for ten eighteen twenty-two and send town.
Motion made? Second. All in favor? Aye.
Still an open session here.
It's still an open session, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen.
Excuse me, the Board of Selectmen meeting is still an open session?
Yeah, okay, goodbye.
So the Board of Selectmen meeting is still an open session, so if you're gonna speak, please step outside.
Give us a few minutes.
Alright, so, uh, next is, uh, so we're gonna vote on the, the police station building project completion using unused funds. So I'll insert a motion to, uh, declare the police station building project complete and paternity unused funds in the general fund.
Motion made? Motion second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay, so now, just gonna, we're gonna sign, and then, uh, we'll, um.
I was a new builder.
That's nice, and also.
You guys do it inside yet?
It's easier when you're a lot of time inside and anything else. You guys change anything up on HVAC or anything, or you guys keep the same, I think it's got steam, right?
Bob, how you been? How's business?
Oil business is slow, but, uh, host business is scary.
Yeah, and I'm sure old businesses are at this point a little scary, huh?
Right, so oil's down, but, uh, it's rates really. How about you, you been missing?
Yeah, we just continue to.
Keep it over, showing this.
Yeah, we're, we're bragging because we're, we're filling in seventy percent, it's competitive. It's just.
I say bragging.
Bragging is the wrong term. They, they don't, that's why a lot of stuff's been sold, a lot of transactions have happened, because we're, we're down.
Yeah. You couldn't. Actually, some reason I went down the street, the wrong street, and I ended up going down the lane.
So you're right and so left?
Yeah, uh, I, I, just come back from Ramon, I was like, oh, what am I doing? I turn around, I saw the signs, and, uh, yeah, that, good looking property.
It's a beautiful, those are beautiful spots, a lot of money in the market, that, the market's scary right now. They have some deed issues, so all tied up with. We originally talked to them in, we PNS'd in East End.
Really? Now, you, you didn't have anything to do with that pub, the pub, the, the, next, up there on, uh, North Main?
Uh, my father, that was my father's, I, I wasn't, I wasn't, nah, I was a little bit, but not.
That house seems like I think it's still on the market, right?
No, it's sold, just the way that it is.
We all signed up?
Yes.
Alright, I'm gonna trade motion to adjourn?
Motion made?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.